Good morning, everyone. Want to welcome everybody.
Hello, hello.
Is that better?
Not yet.
Hello, hello. Hello, hello. Hello, testing.
You heard him, Mike?
Hello.
Doesn't sound like it.
Nope.
Good. Okay, is that better?
Yep.
Great. Want to welcome everybody here today on May 5th for our Graham County Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and I've asked Vice Chairman David to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the great power of the religious text, one nation, under God, with the best of our abilities, and with the unjustice for all.
Do we have anyone on line, Hannah? Okay. Okay, can we get a motion to approve our minutes of our regular meeting from April 21st?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Now we'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Can we get a motion to approve our demands and handwritten warrants?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we will turn the time over to Tommy Whitmire from the Sheriff's Department. Thank you for coming today, Tommy. Great, thank you. Any questions or concerns from the board?
No, it's just, it sounds like a pretty good honor for him to be able to be recognized back there, so I have no issue with this.
That is fine, and I'm assuming that using, is it general fund or are they using their jail funds? General fund, okay.
Great.
The, we are, we are the conferences. So we're paying for the travel, the com, for him to attend, or the conference is paid? Well, we just have very few expenses then. Yep, great, thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
To prove the out-of-state travel for Detective Breton Harsh to attend the conference in Chicago, August 4th through 6th.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you, Tommy. We'll now turn the time over to Trey Andrews from the Fairgrounds.
Morning. I was out at the fairgrounds one day last week, drove through there just to take a look at the progress and man DOC is doing an amazing job on our parking lots and our water drainage and Fairgrounds looks really good, appreciate you for all you do out there and your guys pass that on to them. It doesn't go unnoticed, they're doing an amazing job.
And Mr. Chairman, I would note that this is a purchase that we were going to include in next year's budget, but we've just accelerated, so it's not as if we're out of the clear blue sky coming up with another piece of equipment, this is planned, it's just the if we, if we continue with those plans, we'd end up renting a trencher, a skid steer attachment, and this makes the most sense since we're going to acquire it anyway. So I, I'm supportive fully.
Yeah, I think that skid steer that you got out there Trey has been one of your favoriteest tools, it's a very versatile, you can do most anything with it and you're just, you're just speeding the process along and helping with the paving out there, so I, I'll make a motion, if no other conversation, to approve the purchase of unbudgeted capital for a six-inch trencher for our skid steer for the parks.
Oh, second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you Trey. Now turn our time over to Brian Douglas with the Health Department.
Morning.
But you will, you will still go ahead and get the three quotes then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hopefully I'll have the right to bear your input.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
None here.
Okay. We get a motion?
Yes. And, yeah, I appreciate your work on this and, and upgrading the and using the, the funding, the, from the state rather than our, our, our own general funds to take care of this need and, and the future needs, so I'd go ahead and move that we approve the purchase of, for two copy machines and six computers for the, our Health Department.
I would gladly second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you Brian. All right. We'll now turn the time over to Dustin Welker, our County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you are very well aware and informed, Secure Rural Schools is a, is a revenue that's given to us through the federal government. It is funds based on acreage of forest. It, it's similar to PILT, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, that, that the county receives. Secure Rural Schools, however, is for, for the schools and not, not the county, so the Board of Supervisors are required to receive it and then distribute it amongst, amongst the schools in the county. Unfortunately, Secure Rural Schools was not funded by the federal government fully this year. It was only partially funded. And this, it's not unprecedented, this has, has, has happened in the past, but it's been a while, I believe back in 2016 was the last time the federal government pulled back on this program. As a as, as a little bit of history, I, I believe last year, the amount of funding that came down was around $425,000. This year, it's $80,000, so it's quite a bit less. The board has the ability to distribute these funds according to how you see fit. And that has changed over the years. At one time, the board based it purely off of population of students in each school. In more recent years, it went to a different methodology of basing it off, partially off acreage and partially off population. What we as staff have provided to the board in past years is different methods to choose from, one based off of 0%, based off acreage, 100% based off population. Another methodology has been 20% acreage and 80% population. Another methodology we've presented is 50% acreage and 50% population. This year, we provided a, a fourth method, another option of based off 100% acreage and 0% population. The number that we use to distribute is $75,248.42. That's $5,000 less than we received, and that is because we have been told in past audits that the county has to keep at least a portion of it and put it into our Highway Department and be used for bus routes. So part of that money is required to stay within the county to help with our road system. So we, we've taken $5,000 of that 80,000, and what's left again is the $75,248.42. So the different methodologies, those are the four options that we've provided. Those are not exclusive options, if, if the board wanted to change it. Again, we did 2080, 0100, 2080, 5050, and 1000. But those presented percentages could be anywhere in between, those are just the numbers that, that we ran for you. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it up to the board to give us direction on how to distribute those funds.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Last, the, the percentages, the method of distribution that, that Supervisor Smith had, had worked out with the Benita School District, was that method two that we've been using the last couple of years?
I believe so, Julie, can you confirm that? 20%, 80% is what we've used the last couple of years?
Okay, so methods three and four, we have not used before, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm very sympathetic. I, I lobbied and advocated at the federal level for the passage the Senate had passed. The, the SRS and the House did not. And so that was, it was unfortunate that we didn't get support. I understand new administration, their cost cutting and, and their justification. But that puts all the schools in, in, in a bind, especially Benita, and, and in lieu of, in light of the recent tax case burden that, that where they have retroactive a retroactive refund, that puts them in a, in a really tough spot. But I have a hard time picking winners and losers and saying, well, we, well, well, not arbitrarily, but just that we will take, take funds away from these other schools. The assumption being that they don't need them as much as the, as Benita. I, I have no knowledge of, of that they don't need them. I just assume that they need them just as badly as everyone else to balance their budget, so that I have a hard time changing from method distribution two, but I will listen carefully with the rest of the discussion.
Yeah, I've follow up on what Paul said there, have a question. If we decide to do whatever we do this year, we can, we can change it back the following year, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes, it's my understanding that the board has the ability to distribute these funds at your discretion.
On a yearly basis, you could change?
Yeah, we have changed on that.
Yeah, we, we have done that, okay. Yeah, it's unfortunate situations what's happened with this money, the $75,000. I don't have my breakout sheet here with me on, on all this previous, how it would be broken out on the the amount of monies on the current way we distribute it. There we go, thank you, Paul. Yeah, the amount, the amount of money is just, is just minute for a lot of these, these schools, but it's certainly important to them all, I, I, every bit of dollars in education is important right now. I, I feel for Benita, this is a one-time situation we're at. I don't know how bad it would damage these other schools to go ahead and do methodology number four where Benita would get the entire amount. I'm sure it wouldn't make them happy whatsoever, but I, I'm not not against letting Benita have the method number four for one year and go back, if we got the SRS back, but none of us have a crystal ball on that to see what's going to happen in that situation as well. So as we discuss it, I'll just keep running this in my mind, and that's my opinion on it.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, so method four, it, it doesn't give Benita all the money, it just base, bases the the allocation 100% off acreage, which Benita has more forest acreage than any other school district, so under method four, Benita would get around 34,000. Dan Hen, 0, Fort Thomas, 2,200. Pima, 25,000, Safford, 2,300, Solomon, 0, Thatcher, 10,700.
It actually benefits Pima and Benita, Pima gets almost double what they got under method two. Safford would get 20, $24,000 less, or, or they basically get about 8% of what they would ordinarily get, so it, it looks like the, the great, and, and Thatcher takes about a 40% hit, so it hurts Safford the most, followed by Thatcher and, and then and Fort Thomas is, is about 60%, so those, those are the, the, the three losers, the winners are, are Pima and Benita, yeah, under method four.
I, I personally feel like I can't
We've, we've got an expert.
Donna, question for you, have you heard anything from the other schools about this particular incident or issue? Nothing, okay. Are they aware of it? I'm sure they're aware of the SRS. Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Superintendent McCoy. This is a tough question for you, do you have a personal recommendation? Very good. Thank you very much for, for your candor.
Thank you, Donna. My personal feelings on it is the, I mean, I can't, obviously can't speak for the other school districts, and they're not here with Benita schools in the situation that they're in. I personally feel like if we gave Benita schools the full amount, I would like to think the other school districts would understand, and I don't think it would be penalizing them by taking it away, I think they would all if any of them were in the same situation would appreciate any help that they could get. And that's where I stand on it, if, if I would like to see us give it all to Benita schools, if that's possible.
Do we have a option, Dustin? We've only had the four methods on there, I, there's not a off, option there was to give full amount, is there?
The option, the option is to distribute, distribute it however the board wishes. We just provided options so you could see what those numbers would look like.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a suggested strongly that we retain a portion for highway, so when you say the, the full amount, you're talking about what's after the, 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 the $5,000, the, for the county, so, so that we're not violating any, any restrictions or, or strings, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor David, that's correct.
Well, Chairman, just in, in, in our, as we discuss this, I, I, I think in using Superintendent McCoy's rationale and, and, and her, her suggestion, I, I'd would, would, would like to, to see us consider method four, which gives them the lion's share of the money, doesn't give them all the money, but if it's based on a true Forest Service lands distributor But if it's based on a true Forest Service lands distribution, that would give them the, the thirty-four thousand of the seventy-five thousand dollar total. While the, some of the other schools would, would not, would, would still get it based on the, based on their forest land percentages. And, and I think I could justify that and explain that better than I could just say, well, we just, you know, it's kind of like the example of the, of the field lighting poles. We, we just arbitrarily made a decision. There, there seems, there's a great deal of sympathy. I'm sympathetic, but I also see that, that there, there needs to be some, for me, a, a reason behind the decision that I can then, you know, talk to the other schools about. And when they say, why, why did you do that? Then, then it gives me a, something other than I, boy, I sure feel bad for, for Benita. So that, that's, that would be my possible motion. I haven't, haven't made a motion yet, but that's the direction I'm leaning.
This is a, this is a difficult one. I, I understand exactly where Paul's coming from on that explanation of his thoughts. I, I have kind of the same feelings on that, except I see, I see where on method four, that Pima's increased and other schools are, are down. And that's on because of the acreage amount, I suppose, is, is how we get to that figure. It seems to be just a tough decision what to do here. I understand the sympathetic part as, as well. Benita is in a, in a, has their back against the wall right now on this issue. Again, I don't know if seventy-five thousand dollars would, would pull their, it certainly wouldn't pull their, or fill their needs financially to, to the debt that they have in front of them. I'm sure these other schools, well, I'm not sure. Could be in their budget, this money. I have no idea. It's probably not because it's, it's not given, it's not a given, a secure thing. So I'm, I'm really on, I'm, I'm on the fence on this one. I'm not going to make a motion on either way right now. I'll let Chairman Mack speak his piece. If you haven't already.
Yeah, I really don't, I really don't have any more to say. Yeah, I, I don't have any more. Do you, do either of you have a motion?
Man, again, I'm torn on it. I, I just, I, I feel like we, we could help Benita out on this, but I don't know what kind of arrows I'd take from the, the other school districts and, and have to explain it. But I just feel like, I feel like with this small amount of money, it would benefit Benita more than the distribu- distribution to the others, other schools. So I would make a motion to give the entire amount, the seventy-five, two forty-eight, forty-two to Benita School District.
And even though I, I would prefer something else, I would go ahead and support the chair in his position and, and go, and go ahead and, and second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Apologize, let me get back. Our, I apologize for our mics. It looks like our, our amp burned out at a inopportune moment. So we'll just speak, speak loudly.
Is that, that, we, we should stop letting the, those hip hop concerts use our.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this next item is a request to approve a renewal of a contract with Vista Recycling for an additional three years to provide roll-off services at Graham County's four transfer site location. And we also have roll-offs at the fairgrounds that they'll pick up. They are asking for about a ten percent increase on those pickups. This contract's not a large one. It, it, it's around twenty thousand dollars a year. But understandable for last three years, we have seen inflation in, in vehicles and, and, and labor. And they're, the increase that they're proposing at, at Artesia is from one hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Ashurst from one seventy-five to one eighty-five. San Jose, one fifty to one sixty-nine. Klondike from three seventy-five to four hundred. And the fairgrounds from one fifty to one sixty-two. Vista has been a very good partner. They're, they're very good to work with. And we're, we appreciate the service that they provide the county. And with that, I'd recommend approval for a renewal of another three years for this contract.
You're, why don't you come up and take a, a seat closer to the dais, Caesar? Okay, that'd be fine. That, that'll help a little bit. You're welcome.
This is a renewal of the contract for Vista Recycling. Okay, what's that? Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
You, you can use this mic. It's, it's actually working.
Here's this, huh? Okay.
We can share this one.
We'll get cozy. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this contract is to renew an agreement with Vista Recycling. They provide roll-off services for our four transfer site locations and our fairgrounds. It's about a ten percent increase across the board. And as I stated, Vista Recycling has been a very good partner. They're, they're great to work with and we appreciate their service. It's not a big contract. It's about twenty thousand dollars per year that this works out to. And I, I know our residents really appreciate these transfer site locations. So with that, I'd recommend approval on a renewal of an, an additional three years for their services.
Mr. Chairman, I, I concur. The, you know, when you do the math, it's like anywhere from eight to fourteen percent, depending on the location. And, and with the costs of, you're in the trucking business, the hauling business and, and a combination of, of both personnel, the wages and, and equipment and parts and fuel. I, I, I think that's very reasonable and, and it's, it's great to continue a, a relationship. I think that they had a change in ownership and, and, but to continue to be treated well and, and, and have it be local are all, all great reasons to continue this contract.
I agree with Supervisor David. I'll go ahead and make a motion to renew the contract of Vista Recycling for our roll-off state services at our transfer sites, four of them.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. The, the county manager and the board will now take this opportunity just to present a brief summary of what we've been doing the last couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Got a hot mic now.
Feel like I'm on American Idol.
You wouldn't be. Just a couple of updates on some, some projects. But I want to start with a very successful rabie clinic on Saturday. I want to thank Brian Douglas and his health department team and also our animal control team and especially Debbie with Desert Cross, that they did an amazing job. We had about five hundred people utilize the opportunity to, to do a drive-in. We had locations at Fort Thomas, Pima, Thatcher and the fairgrounds. At the fairgrounds, we had the most people come in. But it was a very successful clinic and I want to thank the board for the idea and Brian Douglas for the execution. Thank you so much for, for all the work on that. I know it was appreciated. Some of the projects at the fairgrounds were, you mentioned the parking lots at the DOC. That has been really a gift that landed in our lap. We're doing it a little earlier than we wanted, but when the, when a paving crew from DOC offers up that, that opportunity for, for a very small fraction of the cost that it otherwise would be, we, we jumped on it and they're doing a very good job out there. We've, we've supplemented some of the equipment. I want to thank the highway yard and, and Trey and, and Steve and everyone for jumping in and helping out with whatever we've needed so far to, to keep them going. It's been very good. Our shade structure, we're still waiting on, on the metal. It should be here any day and we'll, we should have that done by the end of the month. Our, our radio upgrade with Motorola has, has seen a lot of progress lately. So a week from today, we actually went live. It was a little bit unintentional. Our analog system unexpectedly went down. We'd already been testing for a week and it had been successful with the testing. So we just went live and we have been live since with very good results. The, the clarity is very much improved from everything I hear. And the, the ability to be in buildings like the schools and Walmart areas that, in other times, we did not have good coverage. We do have coverage now with our digital system. So there are some tweaks that we have to make. There's still some equipment on some of our towers outside of town that we're still working on, but it's definitely been moving in a, in a good direction. Today with our audit, we'll hear that the county needs to improve on their IT policies. We have been working on that and today we'll have our works, first work session to review two of those policies that we've been working on. We bid out the re-roofing of our animal control and we've awarded that bid and that project will also start this month and finish this month. Want to thank Trey and his team for working with our, our livestock association. They received a grant and it was a pass-through grant down to us to purchase an office trailer, an eight foot by twenty-four foot office trailer that they can more efficiently run a lot of their business out of during the fair and other events that they have. We have that on site and they're just buying some furniture and, and generator and other stuff that the grant provided for. And also they had their big pig sale in the Ag building this weekend. A lot of work for Trey and Jim and their crews and from what I hear is a, a really good event. So thank you. We had our kickoff meeting for our fairgrounds master plan. Bowman is our consultant on that. We were able to meet with their engineers and also their landscape architect and walk the property and had a very good initial meeting. And we hope within a few weeks, maybe a couple of months, we'll start seeing some documents to review and plans. So we're excited about that. And then also just a reminder, budget hearings tomorrow and Wednesday. If you haven't picked up your budget sheets from Julie and Finance, please stop by and get those. And we're excited to hear about everyone's budget. Couple other things at the fairgrounds, if you've been out at the fairgrounds last week or last few weeks, our little league and softball is, is just in full force. There's, there's a big need for parking. If you go out there on a weeknight, you'll see that these parking lots are going to be a big help to us out there. There are hundreds and hundreds of cars each night with, with all the, the kids playing. And again, our crews do a whole lot of work picking up trash daily, marking the field, setting them up on a daily basis. It's a, it's a lot of work and they do a really good job. The fields have looked really great. This is a big week for our highway department. It was a big week last week. We finished the Watson Lane Low Water Crossing. Will chip seal those approaches here in the next couple of weeks while we're chip sealing. We were able to finish that very large patch on Solomon Road. Our, our in-house crews did all the prep work. We went down about five feet, took out a lot of clay and other material, filled it back up with so much better material, compacted it. And then CKC put the cap on last week and it rides really smooth. They did a really good job out there. We have power line road ready to chip seal. That'll be our big project starting today for our chip seal season. And our crews have been out prepping on the west side of town, central Fort Thomas. That entire area will be our focus for this chip seal season. And again, that starts today. Lot of stuff going on in the engineering department too. I, I won't hit on any of those. I'll save those for our work session. And that's my report for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Howard?
Okay, yeah, on the twenty-first, I was able to help put together a meeting with our, our Congressman Siskomani. He came down and I gathered a group of ranchers and some farmers. We, we talked about the ongoing problem of the wolves and the depredation that they're doing to these, these ranchers' herds and the costs that it cost them. Had a very good conversation and I think we got Representative Siskomani's ear on this. Also talked about important water litigation that's going on, trying to get some help from the feds to help us on this litigation. And then after that, we went to the college and he gave an update on his district so far of his term, which was very good and well received. And on the twenty-third, we had the Graham County Economic Development Meeting in here. It was, it was big target towards the health of our, our county and the facilities and, and provisions that we have provided here for us. Very, very good meeting. Twenty-fifth Spring Fest sponsored dinner, attended that. The chamber puts it on every year before the Spring Fest. All the sponsors get together and give awards out. And then I attended the Spring Fest, of course, on, on the weekend. And on the thirtieth, Mount Graham Hospital Community Update Breakfast, which is very informative, it tells us about the progress, the hospital and all the other entities do within the county during a period of time. Our hospital is growing immensely. A lot of projects coming up, interesting things happening, good things happening. For one is like they're going to have a cardiac care facility brought in that will be able to do stents and different, I believe, catheterizations of the heart, which most people have to travel out of town to do. So what a great thing. That's just one of the many things. So that'd be the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chairman Dave?
Thank you, Chairman. The, I, I began, I was out of town and attended some meetings remotely, but was, once I returned to town on the twenty-eighth, I attended a Rural Transportation Advocacy Council meeting. They had hung their hats on the, the, the thought that there would be about six hundred million dollars in excess funds in this year's budget. And those budget numbers have decreased historically. The, the Senate and, and the House, the, each legislative district was, was given a certain amount of money, discretionary money that they could then allocate for whatever projects. And Graham, Greenlee and Cochise County of Senate crews have benefited from the earmarking of, of funds for the, for transportation projects. Looks like this year they might be getting two or three million dollars, based on the last couple of meetings, two or three million dollars each, which may not go very far and, and they may choose to do something completely different. So transportation funding is going to continue to be, it'll, it'll be underfunded and, to our detriment. And, and that's just the choices that are being made for other, other areas of emphasis at the, at the state for other programs. Went to a Safford City Council meeting that, that evening. There was a discussions, executive session where they discussed taking over the, the, and, and our Steve McGoy, I think, is he here? Yeah, he is. Councilman McGoy, I, I, there's no reason for me to, to, to plow that field again, but, but they're, they're making some changes at the airport and they talked about budget and some other things. So, but I, I, it's always great to, 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 to show up and, and, and be aware and, and support their, their efforts. The next day, Tuesday, we had a, what the, it's, it's called Proyecto Juntos or also known as Project Together. Emily Riddle is from the Health Department is chairing that. It's a health study. Funding has been long. It's a health study, funding has been long-term, we had a five-year with a 10-year, another five-year possibility of funding from National Institute of Health, that was swept, so now we're scrambling, this is a mental health, a way of improving mental health services in our area, coordination meetings, and so we're scrambling to try to find some funding for that, and that was, that's truly bad news, but we're pretty resilient, and I think that there'll be some kind of, something will, good will come of it. Along with Supervisor Howard, I went to the lunch session for the regional partnership for the hospital, they have concerns about the federal funding and the combination of reducing funding and then also increasing the requirements for qualifying for Medicaid, and they're concerning, they're concerned about how that will impact the payments to the hospital, and because of the large number of Medicaid or access patients that they serve, so that's something we need to continue to monitor. And then went to two different Graham County housing workshops, these are consultants from out of state who come in and take a look at, they've done at least six months, maybe a year's worth of studies, see where we're at, what we need, anywhere from 500 to 1,500 houses, depending on growth. We have a deficit and a housing crisis, and not having housing, the current costs are around $220 a square foot for a new house, and so they're recommending, and, but they, it's a recommendation only, but that we'd have some more multifamily housing, either through townhouses, or fourplexes, or something like that, which is fine, but without the funding source, or to having developers step up and say, yeah, we want some of that. We're, it's just a study at this point, but it just reinforces our need for housing here. The next day, I was in a day-long liquor board meeting, where we're reviewing the requests for Harkins Theaters throughout the state to add a mix of drinks to their concession stands, and they're already having beer and wine that they sell, and this allows, would allow them to serve certain mixed drinks, and, you know, I already have a hard time paying $10 for popcorn, and I can't imagine, there are just lots of problems, it hasn't been resolved, but it could be, this issue could be coming soon to a theater near you, because if they are approved, then I don't know if people here would buy beer and wine to, you know, they're already, I don't know, it's a matter of choice, but that was one of the issues we looked at. And then said goodbye to a good friend, and dedicated worker, Joe Carpenter, his retirement reception was on Thursday, finished the week up with CSA County Supervisor Association Legislative Policy Meeting, and attended the Cinco de Mayo Parade, it was very well-done, and on fairly short notice, or at least there wasn't a lot of publicity, but there's a lot of spirit, and it was great to see the groups, and that's my, longer-than-I-thought report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, appreciate both of you. I attended some of the same stuff that the other two gentlemen did, so I'm not going to go over that stuff again. I did have the opportunity to attend the Mount Graham Regional Golf Fundraiser in Phoenix this weekend, it was very comical for my team, because I don't golf, so they brought their A-game, and I brought the comedy, but it was a good, good time and a good opportunity to support the hospital. I did spend some time on Upper Solomon Road, Watson Lane, and also Powerline Road, and I just want to really thank our highway department, we have a great crew that does a great job, they have a lot of skills, and a lot of mixed talent, and just want them to know we appreciate them and recognize the things that they do for our community, so, thank you, Steve, if you'll pass that along. And go ahead and move on, next, we're going to have a presentation from the accounting firm of Fester and Chapman, PLLC, given by Mr. Ben Herr. Thank you, sir.
Hello. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and the Board of Supervisors. My name is Ben Herr, I'm with Fester and Chapman, CPA firms from the Scottsdale. We have performed our audit for the Graham County for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, this is our presentation. Before I start, I would like to extend our appreciations to the county administrators, and then Julie from the finance departments, with their help, we were able to successfully complete our audit process. As you know, the audit itself, is even though it happens every year, it's a very demanding and rigorous process, so I would definitely would like to appreciate it for their support for the whole process. The first slide I have here is from the Auditor General's office, they were not able to attend these meetings, but this is basically letting you know that this audit, Auditor General's office has to conduct it all the counties in Arizona, and then they contracted the Fester and Chapman us to perform the audit of the county for the fiscal year ended 2024, and then they also be part of the process, reviewed our work for the accuracies, and also conducted, make sure we did perform our audit in accordance with the required auditing So this presentation is basically two parts, first part of the presentation is audit result summary, we have performed the financial statements audit for the counties, so we actually issued our report on that. Second part of the audit report is a single audit report, when the non-federal agencies receives federal fundings over $750,000, single audit is required, so we actually have performed the single audit on certain major program we selected, and then that is included in our single audit report. Third one is required communication from the auditors to the Board of Supervisors, basically they describe what had happened during the audit process, and if there was any challenges and difficulties from the auditors. Second part of the audit presentation is financial overview, so we actually have summarized the financial information from the auditor's financial statements, including this report. As I mentioned the first, the financial statements audit result is we issued a modified opinion on Graham County's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2024. Basically, what that means is the highest, cleanest opinion you can get from this type of audit. We also have our findings on certain things included in this report, so we have the two significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting related to the Second one is a single audit summary. We basically had a modified opinion on those two single audit major program we selected, first major program selected was federal assistance listing number 10.665 Schools and Road, and then federal assistance numbers 21.032, the COVID-19 local assistance and tribal consistent funds. No findings were reported, basically either in internal controls over compliance or compliance cells, but it's good there's no non-compliance issues reported. As I mentioned, that this is required communication from the auditors. Basically, these financial statements, including some sensitive estimations related to pensions or useful life of capital asset, and then also sensitive disclosure, including the financial statements, was retirement's plan based of, because of the actual estimation calculations for the pension liabilities. As I mentioned the early years, we did not have any difficulties encountered during our performance of audit, there was no disagreements with the management on this audited result. And I also noted that there was significant deficiency was related, reported in relation to the IT control issues. Financial overview, these numbers came from the financial statements we audited. As of the June 30 of 2024, county has reported total asset and deferred outflows of a total of $133 million, which is made out of $62 million in capital asset, $51 million of cash and investments. So roughly 47% of the asset was from the capital assets, and then 45% of the total asset and then deferred outflow was related to cash and investment, including investment held by trust. Total liability of the $53 million were reported, about $90 million were related to the pension liabilities, and then 25 million were, 25 millions, roughly 48% of the total liabilities were associated with the long-term liabilities, which resulted in total net positions of $80 million, and then that $80 million is made up of the net investment in capital asset, $37 million, and restricted net asset, net positions of $22 million, and unrestricted net positions of $20 million. This is a revenue breakdowns. My apologies here is actually I realized that the pie chart, the percentage in the pie chart was inaccurate, so I was just going to give you the numbers. Total revenue reported by the counties is $58 million, so roughly $20 million is came from operating grants and contributions, which is about 35%, and then $7.2 million came from property taxes, which is about 12% of total revenue. State share revenue was reported about $6.6 million, which is about 11%, and then charge for services revenue was about $6 million, which was about 10% of total revenues. This is breakdown for the expense side, total expenses, the county reported about approximately $40 million of total expenses during the 2024, $40 million was related to the public safeties, which was about 37% of total expenses, $10 million associated with general government, $5.6 million highways and the streets, about like 14% of total expenses, and then welfare and education. So this is the end of my presentations, do you have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions? Supervisor, any questions or concerns?
Just, thank you, Mr. Herr, for your report, just for people who were, got their, raised their eyebrows when they, when we talked about IT, significant findings with IT, those are something that are a very high priority, they're basically, I think, because of cybersecurity and some of the other concerns, that those are, they're related to those, and that's something that we have a very high priority on fixing, and this should be, we're hoping this will be the last year where we have significant findings, and we're working on that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. Herr. Okay, do we have any call to the public? Okay, all right, that'll conclude.
There's a, we do have Mr. Caesar, but I don't know, he didn't sign, he didn't sign a call to the public, you don't want to speak, do you? Okay.
No.
Caesar. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting, thank you.
Got it.